Dear God, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Allow us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect the residents of Garden Grove. Continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
On this Veterans Day, it's my honor to lead the pledge of allegiance with you. I want to thank you for all the veterans who's in the audience and all over who's watching us tonight. Thank you. Please recite the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is Veterans Day. We'd like to certainly say our blessings to all the veterans and all the individuals that served. A lot of people don't really know where Veterans Day came from. Actually, it came out of the First World War. It was called Armistice Day, and it was set on the 11th month, 11th hour, 11th minute. And they did that so everybody would remember it. And of course, as the World War II and the Korean War come along, Armistice Day didn't fit in because there were a lot of other veterans. And so, they changed it and made it Veterans Day. And then sometime in the late 50s, they changed it from Armistice Day to Veterans Day officially and made it a national holiday. We have some presentations tonight, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Susan Emery to make the presentation this evening.
Good evening. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to present the business spotlight highlighting the accomplishments of local business professionals. This evening's recognition goes to Acacia Adult Day Services, celebrating its 35th year in Garden Grove. Would Executive Director Mallory Vega, staff members Julie Duarte, Jan Brooks, and board members John Standiford, Linda Cahill, Harry Krebs, and Kelly Unvari please come forward? Located on Acacia Parkway in the Garden Grove Civic Center, Acacia Adult Day Services is a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing personalized care to adults and persons with disabilities. For 35 years, the professionally trained staff have committed themselves to providing high-quality daycare and wellness services in a safe and caring environment. In 1976, a minister from the local United Methodist Church, Dr. Miles Acker, traveled to Hawaii where he was introduced to the concept of adult day services. Inspired by what he saw, Dr. Acker shared the idea with a small group at his church that was looking for alternative ways to address the growing needs of seniors in the Garden Grove community. The group took the initiative and proposed opening a community adult daycare program to the city of Garden Grove, who in turn wrote the pilot project funding grant to the Office of Aging. Three years later, in 1979, the Garden Grove Adult Day Care Center opened its doors at the United Methodist Church on Main Street. In 1997, staff, volunteers, and participants moved to the current location on Acacia Parkway, reopening their doors as Acacia Adult Day Services. After 35 years in business, Acacia is able to aid about 150 clients with various personalized care, including activities to stimulate physical and mental health, socialization, and senior transportation. The facility offers its members rides to doctor appointments, personal appointments, family shopping, and places of worship. In 2013, Acacia was selected as one of six community-based adult service centers to participate in the California Association for Adult Day Services Community-Based Health Home Project by SCAN, whose sole purpose is to keep seniors healthy and independent. Recently, Acacia received $5,000 from the Disney Volunteers and $1,500 from the Walmart Foundation's local facility giving program. With the strong support of the community, Acacia Adult Day Services has been able to ensure success and longevity while improving the quality of life for older adults and persons with disabilities. At this time, the mayor and the city council would like to thank and present a commemorative gift to Acacia Adult Day Services in recognition of their efforts towards helping seniors and people with disabilities maintain a higher level of independence. The city is proud of Acacia Adult Day Services and its 35-year commitment to enriching the lives of senior citizens in the community.
Who do I get this to? Chair, why not? It weighs more than you do.
I only say that to my fans.
Let me put my clothes down.
She can do that, too.
I count to three. One, two, three. Okay, one more. Perfect.
I have a box that goes left. Would you like to say a few words?
Honorable mayor and council members, on behalf of all those associated with Acacia Adult Day Services, I thank you for this wonderful honor. The city of Garden Grove, the citizens, city councils, legislators, business community, faith community, has been beside Acacia step by step. You have shown tremendous vision and provided our seniors with a lovely location to enjoy their golden years. I believe if all of us were to be asked about what we want our golden years to look like, we'd say we'd be active, independent, in great shape, and embracing life with gusto. Most of us will, however, for those who will need help, Acacia is here and will continue to be here thanks to your support. In the big picture, why does Acacia matter? Here are some statistics. Orange County's population is aging faster than the national average. Over the next 35 years, the proportion of our population aged 65 and older will more than double. 84,000 aging adults with Alzheimer's disease and related dementias reside in Orange County. And Orange County's poverty rate among older adults is four times that of the national average. Currently at Acacia, we have 152 participants enrolled in either adult day healthcare, adult daycare, or dementia care services. 89% of those require medication management assistance, 55% are diagnosed with dementia, and 58% require skilled therapy. Here is a letter from a caregiver of one of our participants who suffers from dementia. She expresses a common theme we hear from our caregivers. "My mom and I have greatly benefited from Acacia Senior Center. Each day of the week, she is involved in a variety of activities such as art, gardening, food preparation, exercise, and other stimulating activities in a safe and inspiring environment. The relationships she has formed with the other seniors and staff have brought her much happiness and kept her engaged. I greatly appreciate all they do for our family. As a caregiver who works full-time, I know she is in good hands so I can focus on my work and responsibilities and come home to a happy mom. Thank you, Acacia, for your love and care. The need for our services continues as the baby boomers age, as do their parents. Those in this room and those watching at home are a part of Acacia's community, and we want to say thank you for your love and care for the past 35 years. May it continue. Thank you."
At this time, we'll go to oral communications.
They have another person to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. They can all seven speak or all five.
I thought somebody else earlier. Oh, we changed your mind. Never mind, I'm wrong.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to oral communications, and we will include the successor agency with the oral communications. Mr. Sergeant Alan Tran.
Honorable mayors and council members, well, tonight is just, I came here just to let you know of the updates of what we have done so far. I say pretty much like a good news. Lately, we have one of the employees that works at the Time Warner's cable, who is one of the employers in your cities. We're trying to get bridge partnership with them in a ways that the applicants that joined the Army Reserves, his job was a cableman. And where we can use, where we could utilize the partnership is he goes to the Army to train him into a network, which is like IT managers that we're going to train him for. And so, in return, Time Warner's going to get a better employers and he's going to be a better fit for the company. So, that's a good news that I have for the community.
Thank you very much. Come on, give him a hand.
Honorable mayor, council, and staff, a lot has happened in this year. Congratulations to have worked hard to be where you are and those who are going to other places. It's not easy. I wanted to thank the city's vision for looking at Ciclavia as an eye-opener and paving the P. Wright Way, which now Stanton's looking at it, the vice mayor, and Cypress is telling his staff they're looking at it. Because this will help Garden Grove downtown Main Street if we could revamp and put youth-oriented type environment. The next thing is the master plan for the bicycle. So, like our government agency is telling me that, Earn Web is, with the staff here is proceeding with it, and beginning of the year, they'll administer it. And I'd ask the council of consideration to engage in this issue like Westminster and have your hands rolled up in sleeves, because I like to see the most robust master plan to give Garden Grove with the density that you're going to have, something that people can shop and buy, because now postal service can, you can order your food seven days a week. I mean, it's just changing the environment that we think about getting our car and go to grocery store. So, I'd like to ask for that. I also would like to ask, Close to Mesa got a grant from OCTA, some $150,000, almost close to $250,000 for Safe Move. All 16 elementary schools were able to teach, going to teach your kids how to walk to school and ride their bikes. One in two in five students are not able to walk a mile or run a mile. I think we could offer the infrastructure and work with the school. I keep encouraging this partnership with the school and with the city, because that partnership will score high for grants. And I also encourage the P. Wright Way, it's already been done, it's already been high prioritized to apply for the grant in this spring, 2015. On November 13, 10 o'clock, the Safe National Route School Partnership will have a webinar, and you're more than welcome to sign up for it. Send me in hi, I'll give the staff the information. And I'd like to see that during the holidays penciled in, discuss it, and approve to have that already set to apply for the funds. This is going to be something that's already been developed. You don't have to, a lot of stuff and time to create this project. I also like to see the signage, if we could get one, it's the manual uniform traffic control of the Caltrans approved October 2nd, the three-foot sign. In the memory of the loss of the youth at Chapman and Gilbert, I'd ask for a three-foot sign there, because we have a lot of traverse bicycles in that area and other locations that would be determined by traffic engineers. But I've worked since then because of the plight of that issue. Now, OCTA, yesterday, Honorable Councilman Steve Jones was there, a board member, that the issue of the bus that hit two people in a crosswalk, the issue of the three girls that were killed, it is a concern to the OCTA and it's a county concern based on their description. And I asked the city of Garden Grove to be fully a part of that, because I looked at my other day riding a bike and I almost got craved. I mean, within a foot. So, we have issues of transportation. A lot of people are depending on cars when we're not going to be able to hold our roads up. Our road on Orangewood, minus say 200 feet from Gilbert, south side of Steve Jones' house, I got a picture where the asphalt is kicking into the bike lane. So, we have a heavy transverse there. We have overuse of our roads, and we don't have the funds to continue to segregate them. So, I'm hoping that we can bring together a solution to these problems. And I would encourage to get contracted staff if you need it, because you're going to have a master plan, you have staff, this is my opinion, and you have staff counter, and you got a master, you got a grant process. And I know that it's hard for me to just keep up with just what I do now. So, all I'm asking is in consideration of the situation you're in, so you can jump ahead and get the funds and get your master plan, then you have a really healthier environment for the kids and safer for the community. And I think it's important for the city to take that leapfrog. Thank you.
Thank you. Rodney Powell.
All right, I just want to make it, just for the record, it's actually Roderick Powell.
Roderick.
Yes.
Well, we'll change that in the phone book.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. It's difficult in Garden Grove. I run now several days of the week. We don't have sidewalks, we have bicycle lanes, which help a lot actually, except for that there's too many vehicles parked in the bicycle lanes, like on Stanford, and you're forced to go around them into the street. And as I ran the other morning, about eight over by, what is that street, Bixby, the school bus is coming around, and I got nowhere to go, there's cars there. If I don't stop, the school buses, they were going to run me over, let's put it that way. You know, so there's something wrong, and it's just something to consider that one day we might want to, I don't know what the correction, correct answer is, but I was glad to hear what he said. I got a lot of things, several things I wanted to address. First off, Steve Jones and the cellphone and what you said, Dina, at the council meeting when I wasn't still here to, you know, hear it. I did watch it on TV that night, so it's the same difference. It doesn't matter, we don't have to stay around. We're not showing any disrespect if we leave early. I have somewhere to go on Tuesday nights. So, you said that he one time had an actual legitimate helpful reason to be using the cellphone. That doesn't weigh against the other 99% of the time when he's just surfing the web and disrespecting all of us. So, that's my point on that. That's bull, you know, I don't know what else to say. Fat buoy, beat you again, it looks like, but it doesn't matter this time. He doesn't have Dina to keep him from getting the seat this time. It's funny, he's replacing you, right? Isn't that ironic? Anyways, those are things neither here nor there. I could talk about important stuff, like the yards, you know. I walk a lot and run a lot, and I see there's yards all over this city that everyone's just saying, I'm not paying those water prices. And there's dead yards all over the place, and they aren't turning them into beautiful drought-resistant yards, they're just ugly. But I'm going to go with what I came here to say. I don't know, it doesn't really matter where I start. Chief Barlag is supposed to have said, quote-unquote, "Everyone has a boss." So, the big question is, who is his boss? That was when someone had asked him, now, this may be hearsay, but I believe it happened. Someone asked him, you know, how could you hire this Jeremy Broadwater? Everyone has a boss, was supposed to be in his response. And we know who his boss is, it's Matt Fertal, right? That's his boss. Now, you're Matt Fertal's boss, so you're really the big boss, right? Because you can fire him and he can fire Jeremy. You're interrupting me.
Three votes is his boss.
Okay, three what? Three votes? Three votes, I'm aware of that. So, you're one of the three votes, but you are his boss. You know, the bottom line is, this guy's life was, is basically ruined, somebody's pen, basically, you know, and yet, you know, maybe he did some wrong, and, you know, but now he's gone. He gets, I don't know if the city's aware, if they read on this website, I can't remember the name of it, that TiVo wrote an article, and it's very clear that through great effort, they found out that even though he's resigned, he's going to be with the city getting 200, you know, 1,000 a year for the next two years on a created position. These okie-dokes that Matt Fertal does, also okie-doking Jeremy, bypassing and getting his one year, he would have been out with a one-year review that was bound to fail, apparently. Look, I've only got a little bit of time, you know, and that's okiedoked. You know, I'm tired of the okie-doking. So, I'm going to say this other stuff fast, I don't know how, it seems like I got short time. I don't like that we were silenced that one meeting, I don't like that we had a meeting counseled, canceled. I don't like that you sent a hit piece against the guy that's running against you that's only 28, 26 votes behind you, accusing him of being a communist in the Vietnamese language. I really don't like that. You know, I guess I've just said some stuff you need to hear. The city needs to hear what's going on. And that especially, that hit piece, you're aware of the hit piece you sent out in the Vietnamese language accusing your opponent of being a commie? How low can you sink? How low, Mayor Broadwater, can you sink? Does it get any lower than that? Is that the amount of votes you're hoping to win by? Because it's a very close race. The amount of votes that you may pick up by accusing him of being a commie? Are we that low?
Your time is done, sir.
I appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. First of all, I salute fellow veterans. Today is Veterans Day, but every day should be Veterans Day. Every morning, we wake up and begin a day blessed with liberty. We should be grateful for our freedom. Every minute of every day, a soldier, sailor, airman or woman, marine, or coast guardsman or woman, is somewhere facing the imminent threat of losing his or her life for us. Some of us, fortunate few, spent our time in the service in relative safety. We faced no immediate threat of violence. There was the possibility of hostilities, but nothing developed. Like the statue of the Minuteman with his rifle cradled in his arms, we were prepared to protect our families and homes with our lives. Today, I attended an event at the Orange County Fairgrounds. There were many similar events in Orange County. Our city recently held a very successful open streets event around Main Street. My question to our council and city staff, why wasn't there an event today in our city? Thank you.
Josh McIntosh.
My name is Josh McIntosh, live at 10832 Stanford Avenue in Garden Grove. I'm going to second some of Rod Powell's comments there, beginning with the Vietnamese hit piece, Mr. Broadwater, that was an all-time low. That was disgusting. You've thrown the commie term around here several times, but to individually pick out the Vietnamese community of Garden Grove and send this slander piece out, I do believe you owe bow and apology on that one. All's fair in war and politics, but I do believe that that one deserves an apology. That was, that was low. I mean, things get said in council, things get, you know, passed around, but to send that out to a specific targeted audience like that, hoping to fire them up and get them on your side, that was low. That stunk. I know several papers wrote about it. I know I shared it on the internet because it was worthy of sharing. I don't know if everyone's aware of it yet, but I sure hope they find out what kind of a message you were putting out. Now, with regards to the election, it's been a close one. It's not over yet. We're 26 votes away, vows behind 26 votes, and I hope he wins. I hope he comes and we get a change in the city, because Lord knows we know it. We've had kids born, go through the entire school system and get into college in the time that your dynasty has been in effect, long enough, long enough. So, I sure hope he wins. I'd like to see a mayor that respects his citizens when they come up here to speak, that he actually addresses and listens to them. I can't name how many issues I've brought before you that have just been ignored throughout the years. No response, no call back, no email, nothing. The only person to ever get back to me is Chris Fawn, which I respect him. And Chris, if you get elected to Board of Supervisors, I'm going to miss you so much, but I wish you all the luck. Dina, congratulations on your water board position. Chris, congratulations on becoming elected councilman. And sorry to be such a downer, Mr. Broadwater, but you canceled the meeting last go-round so you wouldn't have any bad press before the election, and that, that was a new slick move. You really surprised me with that one. But now, what I'd like to address that I'm sure you're not going to address, because you ignore just about everything we bring to you, is this ex-Garden Grove Fire Chief still collecting paychecks, salary bump, and benefits? I understand I can't address Mr. Fertal, but I'd like you to at least address this in some manner. Explain how you gave Barlag a sweet deal to hush him up and keep his mouth shut regarding this nepotism. I mean, these are the strings you're able to pull, and these are the strings we want to cut. Half the city, minus 26 people, want a new mayor. I'm one of them. I've said it a few too many times, I didn't write a speech tonight. I'm going to second what Charles there offset also. I do think our city needs to step up and do some more patriotic holidays. We're the so-called Purple Heart City. We should have had something today for Veterans Day. I went and paid my respects at Westminster Memorial for my, my family members that have passed away, several veterans. And I actually thought about it, why don't we have anything in Garden Grove? It's kind of a shame. Maybe with new management, we'll have some better, things like that. So, all respect to the veterans and good night, Garden Grove.
At this time, we'll close, public, we'll close the oral communication, and we're going to recess the Garden Grove City Council and go to the successor agency.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll call to order the November 11th meeting of the Garden Grove Successor Agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Wynn?
Here.
Member Fawn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communication simultaneously with city council consent items. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Call to vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings. We do have one item for consideration, item 4A. Can we get a report?
Mr. Chairman, 4A is actually a companion item with the city council agenda item as well. This is a contract to complete the landscape and hardscape traffic improvements on Harbor Boulevard to complete the resort district development. This is approving the redevelopment agency portion of the funding, and I'll have Public Works Director Bill Murray give a single staff report for both items, and then you can have questions as it relates to funding from the redevelopment agency. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Fertal, members of the successor agency. Tonight, the agency is being asked to adopt a resolution required by the California Environmental Quality Act and to award a contract to GMC Engineering to construct median- Quality Act and to award a contract to GMC Engineering to construct median and storm drain improvements on Harbor Boulevard from Garden Grove Boulevard to Chapman Avenue. As Mr. Fertal mentioned, this funding is going to be split up into basically two phases. Phase one, which will be Twin Tree and below, or to the south, and phase two, which will be north of Twin Tree. The sequel resolution I mentioned affirms a negative declaration finding and determines that no further environmental is required, or environmental review is required. The construction work to be done includes new landscaping in the median and parkway areas, and the construction of a storm drain in Tree and Tree Lane, and finally, the construction of a traffic signal at the entrance of the Great Wolf Lodge. The project phasing for this work generally refers to all work on Twin Tree to the south, and that's for the successor agency. To the north is a, is a city portion, and that's in Report 7D later on in our council meeting. The majority of the work is required per existing agreements with the Great Wolf Lodge or its requirements for the grant funding. The funding on this project is cumbersome, and I refer you to this financial impact portion of your staff report for a detailed summary. However, in general, this work will be done at a cost, the, the agency portion of just under $4 million, with the successor agency limited to about $2 million coming out of our ROPS funds, and the rest of the money will come from federal grants. Referring to Phase 2B, that funding, excuse me, one second, is, is going to be done at a cost of just under $1.2 million. And the, the funding for that, that second phase is a mix of EDA grant, a tourist improvement district funds, and sewer and water funds, and finally Measure M2. So I hope, like I said, the funding on this is fairly complicated, and I hope that's clear. On October 6th of this year, staff received an open for bids and determined that GMC Engineering was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can be, begin work in late January of next year and should be complete by June of next year. Please keep in mind, we've delayed the project until after the holidays, and there is a Disney, like a 2K or 5K event, you know, it's a running event in early January that we're, so that's why we're delaying all this work until after that time. Anyway, this concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, staff? Bill, are you referring to also the Avenger Half Marathon that is going on in Garden Grove here in November? Is that something different?
No, this one's in Janu, in January, first part of January.
Yeah, Disney elected to run a, an additional half marathon in January through even a larger portion of Garden Grove, so we're very fortunate. We have one this Sunday, and then another one in January, and so the first time they'll be coming through Garden Grove.
Do I have a motion?
A move we approve.
Second.
Call to vote.
Mayor Broadwater, it didn't...
Just a test.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Any matters from agency members?
No.
Seeing none, we'll adjourn back to council.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to consent items. We'll reopen council and go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that Items 4A, 34K be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a council member.
Do we have a request?
Yes, Mayor. I believe as Mr. Nixon had reminded me, it was 4C, Tom, right? Did you say that I should make a disclosure? Sir, this is a matter involving the county. I believe that has nothing to do with the District Attorney's Office, but out of the buttons of caution, as I'm employed by the DA's office, I'll recuse myself on this vote.
Same situation for me. I'm employed by the county with a different department.
Okay. Anything else? I'll accept, I'll entertain a motion for the balance.
I'll move them.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to 4C. Entertain a motion.
A question. Do I have to recuse myself, or can I? I have no conflict with the department, so can I vote on this?
If this contract does not have anything to do with your department, then with the disclosure, you are entitled to vote on this matter, and I believe you're going to excuse yourself on this one.
Actually, yes, I do. I have all four of them.
Entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second, 4C.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Let's go to seven item, 7A.
Mr. Mayor, 7A is an agreement with I-Water to integrate our existing data on the city's water and sewer systems, G.I.S. system, and Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal, Mr. Member, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to award a contractor to I-Water to update the city's current G.I.S. data, such that it works with the city's new G.I.S. software, which is manufactured by Ezri. Unfortunately, the city's current G.I.S. software is no longer being supported by the manufacturer. The lack of support has halted the advancement of our data and rendered the use of G.I.S. applications useless on newer equipment. G.I.S. data and output is required for compliance with our MPDS environmental permit for the Public Works Water and Environmental Services Division. Once the software and data are updated, it will be available for use by all city departments, including police and fire, and will be available for public access online. Staff negotiated a contract of $345,000 for the work with a vendor that has, has a proven track record with the city for delivering similar work. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to 7B.
7B is a con, agreement with Group Delta Consultants to help the city deal with its soil and geotechnic services, and Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to approve three professional services agreements for geotechnical services. The selected firms are Group Delta Consultants, Associated Soils Engineering, and Smith Emery Laboratories. The city maintains on-call contracts for geotechnical services to be used in many of its public works endeavors, including street, water, and sewer projects. Having an independent geotechnical consultant working for the city ensures that the work we are doing will perform as intended and ensures project safety. Earlier this year, staff received and opened six proposals, and they were evaluated and ra, and rated as shown in your staff report. Should the council decide to approve the contracts to the three highest-rated firms that we previously mentioned, they will be available for use by this, by the city this December. Staff negotiated a contract for up to $300,000 for each of the three firms. Funding for the contracts will be project-specific. However, in general, it will, it'll come from Measure M2 and gas tax funds. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Any questions? At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to 7C.
Mr. Mayor, 7C is a contract with Clean Street for our street sweeping and catch basin cleaning. Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to award a contract to Clean Street for street sweeping and catch basin cleaning services. Street sweeping is required for compliance with our MPDS environmental permit. These services keep about 280 tons of debris from entering our storm drains, which of course eventually heads to the ocean. On October 20th of this year, staff received and opened four proposals, and they were evaluated and rated. One proposal was deemed non-responsive, and staff continued the process with three firms. Staff negotiated a best and final price with the three remaining companies. Clean Street was the top-rated company. However, their overall costs were 5.2% higher than the lowest bidder. Staff determined that it was in the best public interest to award the contract to Clean Street. The contract is for just over $1.5 million for two years, with an option to extend the contract two more times for total six years. Should the council decide to approve the contract tonight, Clean Street will continue to provide streets cleaning services until 2017. This continued, this concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Let me ask you a question. Do we, do we get any complaints? I have not, I never heard a complaint about the street sweeping, but do we get complaints from them?
In the office, generally, if there's a heavy windy day or something like that, they might have to run over a street twice, but for the most part, they do a great job. We're happy with their service.
How often do they do it?
It's done daily at different parts of the city, and so it alternates in a very complex schedule, and that's been going on for, ever since street sweeping was initiated, probably back in the 70s.
Is it roughly every two weeks?
For the most part, that's how it works out, but they are on the streets every day of the week.
How many sweepers do they use?
I, I'd have to look into that.
And what do they, what exactly do they do with the catch basins? Like just...
Well, they have to suck that material out that's in there. A lot of it is just a free tree, you know, could be tree blouts and tree leaves that go in there.
As far as the, you know, we were comparing all the different, the bidders there, I noticed that there wasn't the usual grid that we have as far as the cost of each one of them. I don't know if it was a clerical omission or something, but I'd like to see that before we go forward, if I may.
The, the cost for each one of the...
Correct. Like, you know how we usually have all the different ratings and...
Yeah, if, if, if you want to know the ratings, I can go through that with you right now. The final ratings for Clean Street was a $23.95.
You want the cost.
Oh, the co, okay, just the cost? The cost for Clean Street for an annual cost was 741,612, you know, 20 cents. The lowest was R.F. Dickinson Company Incorporated, and that was for 704,725.32, and the highest with Athens Service at 796,717. So you can see they're, they're pretty well cl, lumped together with about a 40 to 50,000 dollar spread between the three.
And our decision to go with the second lowest bidder is because of their proven track record?
They have a proven track record, and the way that the low bidder was, was really a combination of three companies that were going to provide services, and we would, we believe that that would cause enough issues with staff trying to coordinate all three different companies that we would probably end up spending that, that money that's theoretically being saved, just in trying to coordinate everything.
Any more further questions? Entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to 7D.
Mr. Mayor, 7D is, as I mentioned, the companion item to the agency contract for the Harbor Boulevard street improvements. This is the city portion from Twin Tree going north to Chapman. Just wanted to point out again that the total cost of the project was 5.1 million. Half of the project is being funded out of the EDA grant, so we're very fortunate that we got such a high award from, from the feds for this project. The city portion here, the 1.1 million, I think Mr. Murray mentioned it's coming out of storm drain monies, Measure M monies, and some of the, the improvement district money. So there's no general fund being used to make the city portion, but it is a 50/50 split of the project, 50% coming from the EDA grant and 50% coming from other funds. So we recommend that you go ahead and approve the city portion of this contract.
Question.
Let's hear it.
Any questions? Any further questions? Entertain a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to ordinances under 8A.
Mr. Mayor, 8A is ordinance, second reading, number 2846. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove approving amendment number A005-2014, amending Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 20, to establish standards and requirements pertaining to electronic changeable copy in signs and revising our monument sign regulations.
Entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Before we proceed, may I just question this really quickly on page five? Page five, section 2J, I just wanted to ask for a clarification there. It reads that the electronic changeable copy on the sign should be operating between hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The sign should remain dark and unlit between hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So I'm seeing in my mind these numbers, right? These lit numbers, are they supposed to be dark during the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM? And if they are...
10:00 PM.
10:00 PM.
Between the hours...
10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. They should be dark.
So they should be dark. So how are you to see the numbers or the cost or the amount on...
No, this is for facilities such as churches and assembly halls, like the...
Oh, okay.
The Elks Lodge wanted a electronic board instead of their, their hand digital sign that they have.
Okay.
They go to electronics. So a place like that, or a church, they would have to, their sign would have to be dark from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
But not the gas station?
Not the gas station.
No, no, no. Like, how can we tell?
Yeah, no, these are assembly uses that would be allowed to have these.
I understand now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Entertain a motion. Move approval. Call for the vote.
Second.
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 Two minutes.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to 8B.
8B is second reading of ordinance number 2847. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove adopting a mitigated negative declaration and approving amendment number A-011-2014, a zoning text amendment to Section 9.20.110 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to allow existing billboards that are proposed to be relocated along the Garden Grove freeway corridor to be converted to electronic billboards.
Entertain a motion.
Move approval.
8C.
Motion received, five yes votes.
8C is also an ordinance for second reading, ordinance number 2848. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove amending Title VI of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to add Chapter 6.46 prohibiting the use of electronic cigarettes in all locations where the smoking of tobacco products is prohibited by state law.
Entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Mr. Beard.
Yeah, I want to wish all the veterans, or thank all the veterans for their duty and service to the country, especially ones in Garden Grove. Mr. Mitchell, that was eloquent, oh, eloquent words you spoke. Thank you for saying them. Also, to, I want to bring forward a re, return or bring back an ordinance, a consideration I need some, to put on the agenda, I need some fellow council members, if they're so willing to allow us to put on the council meeting, perhaps for the next meeting, that's to reconsider the amendment for permitted use of an art gallery on Main Street for reconsideration. I've done some, talked to voters, I've talked to businesses, I've gained additional information, so with that, additional information, I'd like to pursue or reconsider that amendment for allowing the art gallery tattoo parlor on the Main Street.
Just clarifying exactly what Mr. Beard's request should be.
Yeah, what should my request?
The council is free to discuss bringing back an item on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. My suggestion would be to fit within the council procedure manual that if the council were to do what I believe you're suggesting, Council Member Beard, it would be a consideration of a rescission of the prior action, to rescind the prior action that was taken with regard to the Black Umbrella Tattoo, and if that were granted, agendize the matter again before the council. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Would that be a public hearing again?
It would have to be a public hearing again, yes. It would be, have to be noticed that way, so that may or may not allow the timing for the next council meeting, but at the earliest...
The next available date, then?
So that would be your request?
Correct.
And then you need basically a second of the...
No, he doesn't need anything. He, he can make a request, just like you can, anybody else.
What, in this rescission, wouldn't it have to be the same party?
What, in this rescission, wouldn't it have to be the same party to be reconsidering it?
It doesn't, the council procedure manual does not specify that as a requirement. It does for reconsideration, which is done at the same meeting, but under the council procedure manual, the council has a separate provision for rescinding a prior action of the city council.
Yes.
Say something.
Well, that's my request, to bring it back before the council. I think I need some other council members to make it a motion.
No, you...
I'm so moved.
Why would he need a motion? I think any councilman can put anything on the agenda they want.
I don't know if that's, that isn't necessarily...
Goes under matters when they do things.
Yeah.
I mean, the school board takes three votes to put anything on it.
We kind of have the same, same thing.
We've never paid any attention to it, if we have.
So, there have been instances where we've asked that the council agreed to put something like that on the agenda.
Okay, but he didn't need it, does he need anything? No, I guess he wouldn't have to put anything on this agenda.
It should be a motion, because you're saying rescind the previous action.
Basically, you would not be rescinding it tonight. What you would be doing is, if the council chooses to act, to agendize this for the next available meeting.
We can rescind this without putting it on the, on the, on the agenda for tonight?
No. You would be deciding whether or not to place on a subsequent agenda a matter for the council to consider whether to rescind the prior action that the council took on the Black Umbrella matter.
Well, nobody got to speak on that.
They will have the opportunity, if the council chooses to put it on the agenda, to speak on it at that time. All that would be decided today is whether or not the council wants to place the matter on an agenda for future consideration.
Sounds like a violation of the Brown Act to me.
No, the Brown Act always allows a city council to discuss whether or not to agendize an item for a future meeting.
And that's all I'm asking for, is agendize it?
We have a motion. Anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes, with Councilmember Wynn and Mayor Broadwater voting no.
Your turn.
Happy birthday, Councilmember Baird.
Thanks.
And, oh, so we're heading towards the holiday. Don't forget to buy in Garden Grove. It's really important to support our businesses in Garden Grove. I have about just another meeting here at the city council. I'm beginning to feel melancholy and missing everyone already, especially the resident who comes every single week. Well, I really like what they say, whether it's along with my, what I'm thinking or not. I think it's democratic, and it's wonderful. I appreciate all the residents who have supported me, and I'm so blessed to be on a council with very experienced council members who were before me, who I've had a chance to learn from, like Councilmember Mark Rosen, Councilmember Harry Kreb, the former mayor, Bill Dalton, Mayor Broadwater, Councilmember Jones, and I think we had a good crew in the last few years. We went through a lot of things, and especially the economy. We didn't have to file bankruptcy, and that's the best thing, because a lot of cities in California went through bankruptcy and also had to raise a lot of taxes on the residents. We didn't have to do that, and I'm proud of that, proud to be a part of this city, a part of this council. I will never forget the experience. It's very rewarding, and if I have to do it again, I think someone asked me that, would I do it again? Yes, I would do it again. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Vann.
Thank you, sir. That's been Baird, Chris, congratulations, I'm very proud of you. Councilwoman, I'm not used to being so formal. Sister Dina, congratulations. Real proud of you too. It's been honored to serve with you. I've learned a lot from the both of you, and again, Happy Veterans Day to everyone. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Councilmember Baird. Congratulations to everyone who was a candidate and participated in this election cycle. Having been there before, I know how much work it is and how much stress it is and whatever, so congratulations to, to everyone who put their name in the hat on that, and just a salute to all the veterans who make this great country what it is.
I didn't call anybody a communist. I would never call anybody a communist. I never liked it when Richard Nixon did it. I didn't like it when Joseph, Senator, what was his name? McCarthy, Joe McCarthy did it, and I didn't do it. Probably very close. I want to wish Chris a happy birthday. How old are you now?
59.
Good luck.
Okay, thanks.
Veterans Day, I had to speak at a Veterans Day meeting the other night, and I, they wanted me to talk about something that I did when I was in the military, and I wasn't in the military. I was very lucky. I was in between Korean War and the Vietnamese War, so I really, but the story I told them about was we were coming out of a, down a mountain and driving a two and a half ton truck, and the brakes went out on it, and so we used the, we used the emergency brake until it ran out, and then we wore it out, and then we used the clutch. And we got our way into Frankfurt. We were in Germany, and had a truckload of gasoline, and, which is dangerous to have anywhere, but we got into an alley in Frankfurt that must have been made 15 centuries ago because we could not get through it, so we had to back out of it. I had this trailer with us, and we were backing out, and I heard, the guy that was driving, riding with me, he says, "I heard a noise." And I said, "Well, get back there. That's what you're supposed to be doing." And so it's snowing out, it's just terrible weather outside, and he gets back, and I think he only went halfway back because he got back in the truck. He says, "No, there's nobody back there." So I backed up a couple more feet, and boy, I heard this scream, and I said, "Whoa." And we got out there, and I've got this trailer setting up on top of a Volkswagen, you know, and four people in it yelling at me in German and everything, but actually, it worked out that way. The German police come out, and then they got ahold of the military police, who got a truck, who got a tow truck and got us into ordinance to get our trucks straightened out. And that was all a good thing, but two months later, I get a bill from the United States Army for a Volkswagen. And we had a, we had a company commander there, oh, he was just horrible. Everybody I know in that company, there were about 400 guys, hated him. The lieutenants hated him, the warrant officers hated him, everybody hated the guy. And so this letter that I got saying that I had to pay for this Volkswagen, it had a really tiny print at the bottom, said that if I wanted to, to make a statement about why I shouldn't have to pay this, I could send it to General so-and-so-and-so-and-so. And so I wrote out a letter and told them why I was the greatest truck driver in the world and everything else, and so the lieutenants got together with me and said, "We want to take a look at that letter before you mail it in." And just like three very shrewd lawyers, they said, "Well, in line one, didn't you mean to say so-and-so-and-so-and-so? And in line two, didn't you mean to say so-and-so-and-so-and-so?" Totally rewrote that letter. I mean, and these guys were young guys, just out of college, they were great guys to have for lieutenants, and, I mean, I was dumber than a sack of hammers, and, and so we sent the letter in, and the letter immediately come back, like, within 10 days, it was back to us, and the company commander was at Revalley, which he never come to Revalley, and he started screaming it. He knew that Private Broadwater did not write that letter, and he wanted to know who was... Now, we had a lot of draftees in there, and they were college grads, too, so he started beating up on the draftees, and I couldn't rat out the lieutenants. They were just too good to me on that, so, anyway, we got past it, but it was an episode in my life that went up and down for a while. Anyway, we will be back on, when are we coming back here again?
25th.
25th. We will be back on the 25th, and everybody have a wonderful time.
Save for cake.
We have cake?
Stay for cake.
Yes, we have cake. Let everybody eat cake.